Dr. Peterson, are you driving a red car today? I can't hear you. Is your, are you, are you muted? There you go. Is that your red car? Not doing well.
There it goes. Okay, I finally unmuted, so. That is mine.
Hello, everyone.
Hi. I'm gonna apologize now, this has been kind of a crazy day, so I'm gonna eat dinner while we're in executive session. I apologize now, it's been goofy.
No apology required. We have at least three people here already, four people, five people, okay, so I see no reason, six o'clock, let's start. I'll call me, door to six o'clock on the nose, roll call, Molly Kretchoeak.
Here.
Ben Wynn.
Here.
Tamika Mukavich.
Here.
And Danielle Bailey.
Yeah.
Great, is there a motion going to executive session pursuant to one C?
I'll move. Oh, second.
Okay, all favor and a voice vote. Aye, aye, motion carries, okay, we're in. So we're in an open session, we're recommending an open session under item one D, and item one E, approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On a voice vote, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two is consideration of the consent agenda. So I'm gonna read these all very quickly, approval of minutes, approval of financials, approval of school board policy on degree or course payment requirements, approval of school board policy and open enrollment, school board policy and payroll timing, approve of accepting special education audit, approve of accepting referring the gifted and talented audit, approval of the contract for Ryan Craig or his associate principal, approval of the contract for Jim Beckman as the director of operations, approve of the renewal of air mark for twenty-one to twenty-two, approval of the cease number one contract for twenty-one to twenty-two, approval of the resignation Shannon Kilton as director of educational services, approval of salary adjustments, approval of extracurricular salary schedule, approval of posting full-time general music slash course teaching position, approval of capital improvement budget, approval of following the listed teachers and professional retirements and resignation, which is at Mar, approval of twenty-one summer school teachers, and approval of joint nurse sharing program with the Maple Hill Indian Hills School District. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. The motion carries. Item number three A is new business in discussion, before we start on new business discussion, we realize that there may be some items here that people are going to want to comment on. Because many of these have already gone through layers of discussion, I'm gonna be limiting comments to two minutes per person. Each person can comment once, after the board is done doing consideration, I will give a moment, see if there are any hands up, and I will call on people, but due to the volume of work we're going to be doing this evening, we will not be able to give more than two solid minutes. All right, with that said, item number three A is to recommend the approval of forming ad hoc school board equity and inclusion committee as adopted by the school board policy committee with an annual budget of fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, I will do a voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three B, recommend the approval of the school board curriculum committee adoptive directive on transportation that establishes any go right and or any contract must make Glendale River Hills pool and have an escape clause for the district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the recommendation?
I just wanna say this is very important that we make ourselves whole. I want everyone to understand what, what, the financial impact of this, that's all I wanna say.
I wanna also say that we need to have a clause in it so we can do what we need to do for our district.
Correct.
I'm sorry, could I add, I believe that clause needs to be, I hope that negotiates this, is that it's for any reason, not just, you know, we need to be able to get bids and look outside, and like you said, do its best, but I don't want it to be contingent on something going wrong, I think we already have enough reason to consider our options, and I wanna make sure that that escape clause reflects that, and we're not locked into three-year deals in either of these agreements. I don't think that'd be best for this district.
And as a proponent of having an opt-out so that we can have greater flexibility, I agree with all those comments, let's keep in mind that we are asking that the administration negotiate this, and we may still come back with either counterproposal or, you know, rejection, so this is our position that Dr. Moser and Dr. Peterson are gonna be carrying through. If there is nothing else, I will ask for a voice vote, please signify by saying aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay. Then, our next item is item number three C, recommend the approval of starting and ending times for Glendale River Hills School District between one to twenty-two school year.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I do wanna just put the brakes around for just a second and remind people that, you know, this is something that we have to take in consideration with with Nicolaid, the feeder districts, and obviously the busing expenses. We communicated the busing, I haven't heard too much feedback one way or the other, I think that any timing is has its benefits and disadvantages, but the sense of it is they feel like the school is competent and confident that they will be able to adjust, and I haven't had a lot of negative feedback from the community, or for that matter, feedback one way or the other, and you know that we sent things out to the community to discuss. So is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I guess I would just say my, what I don't like about how this came about is that this is a policy decision that was essentially made by business managers and other districts, which goes to why we need to relook at our consortium agreement. And this, this decision should be made by our administration, by our school leaders, it could, could or should be in consultation with the board, and our hands, it felt like our hands were essentially tied in this situation, and I, I can't, I don't, I can't recommend her vote for these, these times, other, I know that we need something, it's just our hands are tied. And so that it doesn't feel like a good place to be right now, and I don't wanna find us here again, I guess.
I agree.
I agree. All right, well, with that said, we have motion on table, please signify by saying aye if you are in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'm sorry?
I'm gonna do, I request you do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that, I will do roll call vote based on the motion, starting with you, Ms. Bukvich.
No.
Okay, Danielle Bailey.
No.
Ben Wynn.
Aye.
Molly Kretchoeak.
Yes.
And I will vote aye as well, the motion carries. Okay, item number three D is recommend the approval of twenty-one to twenty-two Glen Hill Middle School Music Program as recommended by the school board curriculum commu- committee. Dr. Moser, did you have anything to add on the two D, the music committee?
Yes, if, if I could, Mr. President, members of the school board. The curriculum committee had asked, they, they, they recommended that this proposal be moved to the full school board, and they approved of the proposal, but they also added that we were to attempt to make contact with the DPI and to review the DPI standards. So there were three parts to the, the action that the curriculum committee took. If I could, and I can't see who, Principal Young is, I think, on.
Yes, I am.
Okay, would you, do you have anything you can help me with on this, specifically dealing with the issue of the DPI? Thank you very much.
So the DPI statement requires that we would need to provide a general, a general music course offering for students through sixth grade, as well as making it accessible to students in grade seven and eight. In the current model of programming that's being proposed, students would have access to fulfilling the general education, or excuse me, general music requirements through the Allied Arts Course of Contemporary Youth Humanities and Performing Arts, which means that their other coursework would address the, in grade six in particular, in their chorus band or orchestra classes, they would meet some of those general music standards there, but they would also have the opportunity to meet them during the Allied Arts class. So they are in fact being offered an opportunity to take general music under the direction of a licensed general music teacher, which we would be seeking to hire.
Thank you, Principal Young, I appreciate that, that's helpful. I can't tell, is Ms. Westfall on? She may not be.
Not here. Is there another, is there another question we can address regarding standards?
Doesn't seem so.
Okay.
So I, I hope that helps, because the curriculum committee did make that specific request, both Ms. Westfall and Ms. Young did research that, and I will say, I have, I have total confidence in, in the recommendation that Ms. Westfall and Principal Young have, have given me. They are very good middle-level educators, and they did follow through on the curriculum committee's request, and I am, I am continuing the recommendation that the, the three-pronged recommendation that, that is in the board packet that Principal Young has made is a good one. It, it's sound in, as a middle education, middle-level education proposal, and I recommend board approval.
If I can just add, I wanna make sure I'm clear on, in Ms. Young, I apologize if I'm a little bit slow on this, but could you repeat the three prongs of it again, of the recommendation?
And the agenda, Andy, too.
Yeah.
Three prongs of, of the recommendation are that students in grades four through five would have access to taking general music orchestra or band, because students in grades six through eight would take choir, orchestra or band, and would basically have a requirement of being a part of a performance arts class as their middle-level experience in education. And then they would also have access to general education standards within the contemporary youth humanities and performance arts course.
Okay, and other than, no other, I'm sorry, no, no other curriculum is being changed?
No.
So any further changes, okay, and I see that here, I was clicking on the wrong button here, so I see the three main prongs here. Thank you very much for pointing that out, I think with Ms. Kretchoeak, so we don't have an open motion, but before we do that, because there's been a lot in there, I don't see any hands up, so.
Andy, I have a, I have a, just a quick, hopefully, fine question that came from our curriculum committee, our curriculum meeting, oh, thank you, which Ms. Young wasn't able to be at, and I've received some follow-up from, feedback from the community sense as well, just related to needs of special education students with the changes to our music program, and I was just hoping maybe you could talk briefly about how you've considered how these changes, you know, will support and what might impact students who are part of special education or special needs, and talk about if you sort of, if you've consulted with our special education coordinator or teachers about how we're going to support students. I know you weren't there, so some of the concern was around not having this, like, year-long general music offering for some of our kids maybe with sensory or autistic, more severe needs or disabilities, and how they'll be supported in these performing arts classes.
If I may, a board member, Bailey, members of the, of the school board, that question did come up, and, and thank you for bringing it up, Board Member Bailey. I could, I did consult with our special education consultant, Ellen Fighter, and her, and, and I asked her for a written, she listened to the, she was at the, she'd listened to it, and I asked her to put into, in writing her summary, and if I just maybe, I'll quickly say, her general statement is that our, the students with, students with special needs would be treated as equals, with, with equity, as they are in math, science, any other course, and they should be given opportunities with music. If there is an exception to that, the IEP process would be used just like we would do in any other educational opportunity. So the, the recommendation that we have been given is that we would deny, we would not deny educational opportunities to our special needs students, and if, if circumstances arise, where conditions need to be considered, that we follow our, our IEP process and adjust the, the educational schedule and services accordingly. Principal Young, am I, am I correct?
Yes, you are correct, we want to make sure that our students who have neurological diversity have the opportunity to participate with their like-age peers whenever possible, so that we can create an inclusive schooling environment. And when there are exceptions that need to be made to that based on need, those can be addressed through the IEP process, and when, and if we have those issues that arise with families and we need to provide special education services, and in those areas, including music, we would do so, and we would make those accommodations and modifications.
Thank you for, I just, thank you for, for speaking to that, and I apologize for using the wrong language, neurodiversity is better, so.
Okay, I see hand up, so the board didn't have any questions, I'd like to call Jenny Dos.
Thank you.
Name and your address.
Yep, I was, I was getting there, Andy, Jenny Dos, sixty-six oh five North Braverman Lane. So as a parent of children with special needs, as well as being a part of the parents of the, one of the parents of the group of parents with special needs of the school district, our concern was not whether or not our children had access to these classes, because we had access before, but that many of our children were being successful in the general music class, and we had them in the general music class because they were successful there, and we didn't have them in the other classes, because we know the needs of our children and know that they were not successful, so by taking that class away, you're removing that support where we know that our children are successful. So when we are speaking to that, I, I feel like that's not being, being heard. So this as both a parent and a teacher, knowing that the ability to support children who have sensory needs, who have reading challenges, who have these different issues, but who are successful already in general music and generally enjoying themselves, who now might not have any ability to go into music class, because the, the choir or orchestra is just generally overwhelming, and now they won't have any music class to go to, so that's, that's what we're talking about. I mean, I'm glad that we're not taking away orchestra or choir, because those classes are important as well. But I just, I don't know that we're being heard when we're saying that's what our concern is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other question? From board or from public, seeing none, I will go to a roll call vote, and I will start off, please signify by saying aye if you support the motion, Danielle Bailey.
I'm sorry, President Franklin, I'm sorry, did we have a motion?
I thought that we had a motion, did we not have a motion, I apologize, thank you very much, let's take a motion. No, 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 I appreciate it, I could, when we started with motion on that, so, is why we slow down. Thanks, did someone have a motion on the recommendation?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay, then, is there any other discussion? If not, it will do roll call vote. So I will call from left to right, Danielle Bailey.
Aye.
Tamika Bukvich.
Aye.
Molly Kretchoeak.
Aye.
And Ben Wynn.
Aye.
And Andrew Franklin votes aye, so the motion carries, I know that it was a lot of hard work. The one thing I do wanna say, though, in summary, is I, I do think that it is a very considerate approach to Glendale's commitment to music education, and I want to thank you for, you know, finding a way to, to make this happen. I think we've got a lot of opportunity going forward, okay.
Andy, I have one more comment, I just would instruct or, or suggest, I should say, that a more specific kind of answer be given to Jenny Dos and the other parents. I know this, we haven't exactly done the full plan yet, but just to keep their mind at ease, just reach out to them and make sure that the parents who are concerned have a little more information that we couldn't give him in, in this meeting, or answer more specific questions. I know you'll be able to, you know, but this is also being developed at the same time, and it, we have to, you know, kind of figure out what's going on. Am I correct, Principal Young?
Again, I will state that if, if we have students that need general music as, or the type of learning that was happening in general music, and that is written into the IEP, then we will have to provide it by law.
No, I'm just saying, it just, it just, I don't want them thinking that they asked a question, and all of a sudden, we just kinda went, we are deliberate on what we're gonna, ready to do, and we will support those students any way possible. I just don't want her feeling like, yeah, I'm just, it was just a, a little push to say, we, we got you.
Absolutely, we, we got our students, we want them all to be successful and have a productive time, and not having students attend a music class would not be something that we would, would offer as an alternative to making modifications to allow them to be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. Item number two, we recommend the approval of the preliminary twenty-one to twenty-two Glendale River School District budget as recommended by the school board personnel and finance committee. Dr. Moser or Dr. Peterson, perhaps one of you would like to just lead the comments. Early discussion.
Dr. Peterson, would you proceed?
Sure, I will. When the board brought me on board in March, the first thing Dr. Moser asked me to do was to help build the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. I used a collaborative process, I gained input from principals, directors, superintendent, as well as discussions with Ms. Johnson, new businessman administrator, just to get some perspectives, and everybody had provided good input. So a lot of the items were, that I put into the budget, I have been discussed with others, just not myself. Budgets always should reflect the priorities of this district. Some items that you have approved already are givens, like salary and benefits for those that you've already approved contracts for. In the budget, I did build in a CPI for the board, this year it's one point one two three percent. And so that's built in. Other areas, you still have a lot of flexibility. I put a place, I put placeholders in on factors that Dr. Moser and members of the administrative team identified. Those are identified in item F, the reinvestment plan as well. You did clear some space in the budget by making some personnel changes in the spring of the year, and then freed up dollars that could be reinvested, you'll be discussing that under F, but I put them as placeholders, recognizing that the budget is a fluid piece between now and when it's approved in October. There are a lot of factors, and I'll talk about that after I've kind of reviewed with you just the preliminary budget. I'm gonna, Karen, if you could allow me to pull up the budget, give me permission to allow me to screen share. Karen?
Karen, are you there? I'll try to get her, see if I can.
I'll, I'll keep talking a little bit, so one of the areas that, that I, I think is, I was gonna bring up on screen, but I can talk about a lot, there are a number of areas in there that I would call unplanned change factors that will impact the budget between now and October, when you approve the final budget. This again is a preliminary budget that you're looking at for tonight. I'm, I'm sure you're gonna see changes in both resident and open enrollment numbers, and with that change in FTE, that will, would change your revenue projections. You'll have a new administrator, a district administrator, as well as new business administrator, and, and they'll be looking at educational decisions differently than what has been built into the budget. I mean, whatever you change over with administration, there may be some reprioritization, and so I think that's why it's important to think about. S R two, which was three hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred and forty-four, and S R three, which is eight hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars, has not been included in this budget in consultation with Ms. Johnson. That is something that'll take place early, later in the year, during probably. That is something that'll take place early, later in the year during probably July and August. Tentatively penciled in some of those dollars for the expanded summer school.
Dr. Peterson, I don't mean to interject, but you should be able to share your screen now.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can everyone see it?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so when I built the preliminary budget, I decided to put in three budgets. The actual audited budget from 2019, 2020, the approved budget for 2021. And I didn't make any changes to the approved budget. I've talked to Ms. Johnson and there will be changes in the 2021 budget before the final audit. But there's still time to do that, so Ms. Johnson will make those changes. I focused really on the draft budget. And Dr. Moser gave me direction to work on what he would call a balanced budget. It's always important to be fiscally considering all the factors that trying to balance your budgets. So if you just go down the different areas, there are different funds in a budget. There's a Fund 10, and in Fund 10, your main source in Glendale River Hills is your taxes. Your tax, one area of your taxes, we built into Fund 10 to deal with salaries and all the things for running your operations in terms of your day-to-day operations with students. It's a little bit less based on what we anticipate the revenue limit to be. Your numbers were a little bit lower in terms of resident enrollment and in terms of open enrollment changes that was put into the budget. So we were a little more conservative. I was a little more conservative. Interest is coming in, as you're aware, at very low. So they had budgeted 38. I only put in 2,500. I think right now we're at about $1,400 or $1,500 in interest for the year. Some of the other sources I kept pretty much the same. We've got a lot more information that we need to have come in to finish off that revenue and you've got time to continue to look at it. But if you look, go to the bottom line, right now it looks as though in terms of revenue, we're going to be about $67,000 less in revenue for this year. In terms of expenditures, you did some reorganization and there are some differences that you can see in this column here. Some of the areas are higher and some are lower. But bottom line, we came in about $1,681.76 less than the previous year. And so that's the basics for this specific one. Now to balance the budget out, as a placeholder, the board had been considering a Fund 46. And so I placed some dollars in there at the amount of $229,922. That doesn't mean that's where it's going to end up, but it's a kind of a placeholder for you right now. And if you do have some excess revenue, I know that the board may be interested in putting it towards future projects. And this again, Fund 46 has been discussed in other committee meetings, cannot be touched for five years. So it's a long-term planning, seed money for projects down the road, five years down the road. Other dollars that are connected with tax dollars come out of, you also have some debt for next year. 256,000 is what I project for that. And then I kept the dollars the same under Fund 80, which you also levy for. So those three are your main areas of levying as we went back up to revenues. And they'll be relatively similar. But you can see your expenditures in those areas are basically going to balance out. So you're going to have about the same amount of revenue and expenditures in this tentative budget. But as you discuss the budget further and as things change, you may be adjusting that throughout the summer and fall. And then Funds 27, which is really Special Education Fund, we project that you're going to spend a little less right now. That may change as well as priorities are discussed. And then if you look at the very bottom, just a tentative tax, this last year you taxed at $6.95 basically per thousand. I have it a little bit less than that, but that's just a very early number. There's so many things that are going to change. And so questions on just the line items and documents that I presented so far for the 2021-22 budget? Do the board have any questions?
No.
Just want to say thanks for the hard work. I realize this is the preliminary budget and that a lot of things go into account in trying to make it work. And then there's the reality and we have no idea how things are going to shake out by the time legislature gets its collective, you-know-what out of its you-know-what. But I really appreciate you putting this together and laying groundwork for us planning for next year.
Just one other thing for you that I thought would be helpful to share. I'll do a screen share with it. And I was working through it before, until we could get the share screen up. Was the unplanned changes, do you see that now? Did that show up on your screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so I had talked a little bit about Esther and I finished there. But there'll also be multiple staffing changes between now and September. That could impact the actual numbers within staffing allocations. Your summer school will add additional FTE into your final revenue limit and then change the revenue limit averages. Dr. Moser's restructure and reinvestment savings may be adjusted, which would change any of the function numbers and line items that I gave you during your summer retreat with four new administrators. That may result in priority changes as you discuss that. So that also could impact the budget. Again, a new business administrator's review of revenues expenditure may also put some changes in where I've allocated the dollars. I may put them in an area that maybe is more appropriate in another area as your new administrator would perceive that, so that could change. And then as Andy was alerting you, the final state BNM school budget still needs to be approved and we don't know what that's going to look like in terms of final numbers. A lot of different discussions going on. And then again, I said summer school will be a cost out of S2 funds that will need to be added into the budget. So you're going to have huge changes, I think, between now and the fall. But I think at least to get you a starting point where you can work off of. And that really was the plan as we started to look at all the different factors going on. Think this is something I recommend that you approve so that you can start spending out of it beginning on July 1.
And that's really it. We need to have it in place to get the ball rolling on July 1. So does anyone else have any questions? And again, I would say thank you. I don't see any hands up, so I'm going to ask for a vote by voice. Please signify by, well, I can't do that. Gee, I did that again. There was no motion. So please, is there a motion on the recommendation?
So moved. I'll second. Ben can have the first.
Okay, fine. Now, on a voice vote, I would ask if everyone is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. We have approved the preliminary budget. Thank you very much. And then I'd recommend the approval of 2122 reinvestment plan. And I don't know if you had anything to follow up on that, Dr. Moser or Dr. Peterson?
If I may, I think Dr. Peterson has covered this. Do you have anything else, Dr. Peterson, you want to add? But I think you put everything into proper perspective.
Yeah, that reinvestment dollars have been built into the different line items. They still may be moved around, but you cleared out about $800,000 for reinvestment, reorganization, opportunities for the district. And so you will have that chance to work with that as well as those added S2 dollars. So you'll have some good revenue to work with and think about as you move forward. But I have nothing new to add.
Great. Then is there a motion on item F, the recommendation to approve the reinvestment plan?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I will ask for a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries and we have approved that reinvestment plan. So item 2G, the approval of the handbook provisions on paid time off. Dr. Moser?
The Personnel and Finance Committee is recommending the School Board approval of this change to the employee handbook. This change says that our present employees will have nothing changed concerning paid time off that applies to every, all our present employees, whether it's custodians, paras, teachers, administrators. The change comes with new employees who start with the 2122 school year.
Okay, and are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion on the recommendation?
I move.
Is there a second?
I can't.
And I should ask this after, just to observe proper procedure. Is there any further discussion questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for approval on a voice vote. Please signify by saying aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Okay, item number 2H. Recommend approval of employment handbook provision on district retirement to be effective with 2122 school year as approved by Personal and Finance Committee. Dr. Moser, was there anything else to add to that?
Thank you, President Franklin. Again, the concept here on these two items is the same in that present employees are not having their retirement benefits changed at all. When people came to work for the Glendale River Hills School District, they had expectations of their fringe benefits. The changes that are in the policy change, as approved by the Personnel Committee, apply to new employees starting with the 2122 school year.
And is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Then seeing none on the voice vote, please signify by saying aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 2I. I'm going to go really slow because this is the last regular item Dr. Moser's going to have on a regular board meeting. But recommend the approval of SWSA and NSSC participation membership.
It's a move.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, just on a voice vote, these are common, by the way, I should say common memberships we have and we have delegates too, so it's a good thing to be involved in the great organizations. That said, please signify by saying aye. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we are on to item 4A and I implore everyone, if you do have visitor participation, please stay until the end of the meeting because I will, and I think I will not be the only one to maybe have a few extra comments to add. But if anyone would like to speak in visitor participation, you may speak on any non-agenda item at this time. State law and or board policy may limit the School Board's response. And I will give people two minutes per comment if anyone has anything. I do not see any additional comments, any additional hands that are coming up. So seeing none, I'm going to close out visitor participation without comment for the first time in a long time. But before I do that, I know that Ms. Vukovich has something that you'd like to say.
I do too, after Tamika.
And I think that we can just all line up, so.
Jim got something too.
I was about to say.
Well, let's start with, so this has been a very, very weird year, crazy year. More board member meetings than I had in the five and a half years that I've been on there in one solid year. But the two things that were very consistent was Dr. Moser and Mr. Peterson. And this is your last meetings and I just wanted to say thank you very much, Dr. Moser, for kind of guiding us into what was a chaotic year with just pandemic plus then losing our superintendent and then just helping us make things right and giving us power to say yes and no and argue the points and making sure that we did what we could best for our district. Mr. Peters, I don't know if you're on camera, but I thank you so much for coming and stepping in. I know that you, I've seen you in that office in the morning and then I see you when I come back in at four o'clock. So I don't know how that 12 hours equals when you work eight hours for the whole day. But, you know, I just really thank you for all the work and the continuous effort you did to make our district great. So, Dr. Moser, I appreciate everything you have done. Doctor, I mean, Mr. Peters, I don't know if you're a doctor, but Mr. Peterson, thank you for helping us build and trying to give our new superintendent a clear path to what they need to do for our district. So I thank you both.
Here, Molly, would you like to go first? Should we let Mr. Beckman?
Jim can go.
Jim? Mr. Beckman?
There we go. Thank you, Andy, and thank you, School Board. I will not go along here. I have to echo some things that Tamika said, although I thought the year was just a typical nine to five, you know, nothing, nothing real special happened. But I, not to get lengthy here because we're doing really good on time tonight, Andy. That's terrific, 40, 46 minutes, 40, something like that. You know, I've been here a little bit longer than a cup of coffee. But, and I knew Elliot and Dr. Moser at Nicolay when my kids went there and I knew him as a friend after he left Nicolay and when he was in the K8 and whatnot. But I really got to know him these last six, seven months as a friend and a colleague and someone that I admire and work with. Didn't always agree with them and I know you find that hard to believe that we didn't agree on everything. But I want to thank Elliot personally and the board for bringing him in to help the ship go straight as it can go after a tumultuous fall and spring that we had along with everything else. And working with Gary was a joy for the budget. We were back to budgeting the way I like to budget, if you will, in involvement from kind of the bottom up. So I appreciate Gary and I won't get long and lengthy, but thank you. Thanks, Gary, and thanks Elliot for all your hard work and appreciate your time here. Thank you.
Okay, Molly?
I will also be brief, but I remember when Elliot hired me in 2004 and I was scared of him completely. And to this day, when I get an email that says, Molly, can you please call me? I feel like I'm in trouble. I'm not in trouble and I could always remind myself that it's one of the best conversations I have with a colleague. Dr. Moser, you exceeded, you came into this role and you had no idea the layers that you were going to unpeel as you came in here. And we also didn't know the layers, to be frank. And you came in and not only did you peel away the layers, but you worked so hard to make our place whole again. And you hired people in the interim that did the same thing, including Gary. And as a result, you elevated the performance of everyone in our district just by your example. And I don't think that we can ever convey our gratitude to you, to what you really did. And I remember when Andy said, he said, I'm thinking about having Dr. Moser come in and I thought that would be great and I really had no idea how great you would be. And I really, I say this with full sincerity. And I really, I say this with full sincerity that I'm really going to miss you a lot. Thank you for everything you've done.
Can I, can I, Andy, I know you're going to have more and everything eloquent so far. So I just, I just want to echo what everyone has said, Dr. Moser and Mr. Peterson, so grateful for you. I've learned so, so much this year, more than I could have hoped for in a wild ride as a first year, you know, School Board member. And so much of that was from conversations with you, learning about you, following your leadership. You know, just, just being able to, to be in partnership with you. And it's been really amazing, so grateful. And like I told you earlier, I have your email and your phone, your phone numbers. So don't think I'll be a stranger now counting you as a friend and mentor. So it's not really goodbye, but it is a huge heartfelt thank you, a lot of gratitude. People will not know the, the depths of what you've done, but we do and we are, I'm extremely grateful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, I'm not going to force you into spotlight, but I'll gush a minute. So do you have anything to say?
Well, you know, I'm pretty new, but you know, I knew Dr. Moser way back in the day because he was at Nicolay when I went to Nicolay. So thank you for your service to Glendale. I appreciate it and I know a lot of other people appreciate it too.
All right, well, I appreciate all that from everyone else. Listen, I think the biggest surprise as I look back on this last year isn't how great you were and how all the expectations that you exceeded. But I think it can be boiled down to one thing that you signed the contract. We gave you a lot of time and we gave you a lot of pause and you still followed through. And you know what? It, it's a commitment. It's demonstration of your commitment to education, to public education, to your community across a lot of different levels. And look, you talk about how you work and, and how you're around at all hours of the day and on the weekend. I mean, hey, I was there with you. It was, it was a strange year and I was really happy to be with you because, you know, you do two things. I mean, you, you, I think you empower, you, you embolden trust. You, you, you gave the board trust and I think you empowered the board. And I think that those were just wonderful things because really your leadership was transformative and you laid the groundwork, you know, for a future. We've got a great future, but I'll tell you, for, for the better part of the year, I kept joking that, you know, if I was going to be remembered for anything in School Board, if there's one thing I had to pick, the one thing that I'd want to be remembered by, it's the fact that I had the good sense to call you first. And it, it may, maybe it's luck, but I, I, I mean, it's been fantastic. And you know, it hasn't been easy, but I mean, you, you know where we were. And it's just a lot of heartfelt gratitude for all the hard work that you've done. So I'm going to leave it at that. I, I, I know that your wife has been wonderful, that she's tolerated my calls at all hours of the day and weekend. And I'm thrilled to give you back to her at the end of the month. You're not done and you're not going to walk out until the job's done. But thank you, really, just thank you a ton.
Well, may I, Andy?
Yeah, we're running long. And now.
I want to thank, thank all of you for your kind words. They are appreciated very, very much. So it, it, so starting out by saying thank you to the School Board, my colleagues who are administrators, teachers, the staff members, the parents, students, community members. It has been a joy and a pleasure for me to be the interim superintendent of the Glendale River Hills School District. It was a good decision by me. When you called, Andy, and I, I, I retired as a result from Concordia University. I enjoyed it at Concordia. It's a good place to work. It's a very nice place to work. But it was a good decision for, for me and I hope it was a good decision for you to, to come to Glendale. This is my community. I have so much confidence in you as a School Board, in my fellow administrators, who, by the way, you have a very good group of administrators. And I, I ask you not forget that, that your, your administrators do good work. You have a good, you have a very good teaching staff and, and faculty and, and a staff. I will be, my grandchildren now, my confidence is so high that my grandchildren are enrolled in the Glendale School District. And I've always said, you can, the, the way you show confidence in a school is when, as a parent, you enroll your children in that school or as a grandparent, is my case. My grandchildren will be, they, they finished the year at Parkway. They had a good year, they enjoyed Parkway. And my, my son and his daughter, my son and his wife appreciated the work that took place at Parkway. And we are, we have enrolled our grandchildren back again and they're, they are staying part of the, the school district. And I'm, I'm hoping that that act, act on the part of the Mosers sets a message to the community that I trust. I trust you as a School Board, I trust the teachers, the administrators, and I'm trusting this community. I've lived here thirty-one years now. And we enjoy Glendale. It's a, it's, it's, it's our home. It's going to continue to be our home. And, and as one said, I'm proud that I hired Molly Kroviek. I'm, I'm, I, it was, I'm very proud. I'm proud that Ben Nguyen was one of my students. And I'm proud that some of the, you, you've hired a, an associate principal, Ryan Krieger. Tonight, he took action. He was one of my students coming out of Nicolay. Andy Franklin is a Nicolay graduate. I think it's a strength of our community that you see, you see us as a, a people coming back, staying in the community and contributing and providing service. And, and don't be ashamed to say that. That's, no, Jim Beckman gives me a hard time. I, 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 I have to, he, he tried to make peace with me today. He brought me a Pepsi this morning. That was the first thing he gave me this morning and I don't know what time that was, Jim. What was it, seven o'clock, seven thirty, you gave me a Pepsi? But I, I, I trust your, trust your administrators, whether it's the new administrators, whether it's your continuing administrators, your faculty. They are the strength of the school district. They, they're the ones who provide the service to your children. And School Board, the community has made a good decision that we as a community have entrusted you with the well-being of our school district. This is our school district and they've put it in your hands and you're doing a good job of it. And I agree with your comments about Dr. Peterson. Dr. Peterson has been a friend of mine for years. He, he served Fox Point Bayside as a superintendent. He was very good. And he served Concordia University. And now he served Glendale River Hills. And the other day I had an email from school business, the incoming school business administrator Johnson, complimenting Dr. Peterson and she's right. She asked that I convey that to you as a board. And I am, and I conveyed it to him. And so I just want to say thank you. This is my community. I'm staying here because we like schools. We like the people we live next to. We like our friends. I like, I, I, I'm eternally grateful for the, the people at Nicolay, my colleagues. And I, I spent seventeen years as principal and superintendent at Nicolay. And those, those people are my friends and colleagues. And I so thank you. I, I appreciate it and the parents who are on tonight, thank you. Karen, thank you, please. Now you won't have to put up with me much longer and it'll make life much easier.
Oh, Dr. Moser, don't say that. The only reason why I didn't get on camera is because I'm crying.
No, you're not.
Yes, I am, I'm telling you.
She's got, you should see, she's got balloons up in her house.
I do not. No, we're buddies, it's all good.
But thank you, everyone, for giving me this chance. It, it gave me a chance to fulfill a, for an educator who, I, I've been doing this, I've been a superintendent for thirty-eight years. I've been a teacher, principal and superintendent for over fifty years. This is a good way to go out, meaning it's a, this is a good way to retire with a sense of, of satisfaction that I hope, I hope I have done some good things to make people's lives better. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
President Franklin.
And by the way, I mean, I know that you're going to be continuing to be active because retirement is retirement, but you're still going to be doing a lot of things. And I look forward to anything that's been for everyone that we all look forward to working with you in the future and other capacities going forward. So.
President Franklin, I do want to say thank you to one other person that may not be on here, but that was the interim Assistant Principal, Brian Wright. He may not be on here, but he did come and help us out extremely, being the great, the man that he is. I know he may not be on here, but I just still wanted to acknowledge and thank all of our interim people who really put it out there this year. So thank you, Mr. Wright.
Okay, well, we have one item left, which is motion adjourned.
So moved, it's my baby's eighteenth birthday. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for joining us and we'll see you next time.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.